This conference will now be recorded.
I mean, that's our ideal. We'd like, we'd like, I'm really sad I wasn't recorded before, but anyway, our ideal is to have them permanently mounted when they're solar is what I heard.
Yeah.
Because they're just the wear and tear and how much effort it is. Okay. All right.
I did just go buy two new batteries for the one that we have. And I've got a couple more days of battery life out of them, but it all depends on the traffic. When there's heavy traffic, they seem to last about two and a half to three days versus, you know, four to five days when it's lighter traffic. And that's with a fresh battery, a brand new battery. So changing batteries out for five or six speed centuries can, it's kind of cumbersome.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. So maybe we leave in there the, you said, start with two, which would be around 12,000 is what you're saying if we're going to be putting them on DOT. I'm nice dot home roads, right?
Yep.
Okay. So Mary, can we bump that up just for purposes of discussion and then we can?
Yep.
No, hold on. Can I interrupt for a second? We had a presentation a few weeks back from someone from Custom Signals. And his estimate, including solar panels, came up to about $42, $4,400. Now, we are talking about the same kind of equipment where the sign would read the speed of the vehicle and it would have the village speed limit up there and say, and it would say, for example, your speed is, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Based on this gentleman's presentation. Now, based on our procurement policy, we ought to be getting some other estimates. I talked to a company back in November and I've talked a few times, Traffic Logics. And I've asked them to send information to you, Dorothea, and to Bob as well as to me, but I haven't heard from them. But shouldn't we be getting some other estimates on this?
Well, I've got one from Tabco. You guys now have one from, I forgot the name of the other one that the guy.
A game of presentation. Frank just told us the name and I've already forgotten.
Custom Signals.
Thank you.
Yeah, the one company that made the presentation was called Custom Signals. The other company that I talked to and I thought they were sending information, Bob and Dorothea, was Traffic Logics. They're located in New York State. I think what we should do is we ought to put together the equipment that we need specifically. And we should get quotes from at least two companies, possibly three. But you're right, Renee, we should, we're probably talking about $5,000 per sign.
Especially what Zach said, if we're going to put them on the state owned roads, which may require some, some extra, extra pieces that may not have been included in that presentation. So.
Yeah, you're right. I've got it right here. And it looks like they do not include installation.
Right.
So if you add that, if you add on to what their estimate was, that's about $5,000.
Okay.
Right.
Moving forward until, what is the status of the bridge project? And what can we safely assume will need to be put forward in the new year for monies for whatever the next phase of it might be?
I answered right now, but I did put a call into DOT today. So I should be getting a call back very soon and I'll have something to report.
Okay. Bob, is the lighting that we're going to have to do also included in that? Or is that somewhere else?
It can be separate because it really is, it isn't dependent on the.
Okay. I think you said it's separate. It's not, it doesn't necessarily depend on DOT, on the timing.
Okay. We're extending our street lighting system on Shane Place.
Bob, you're breaking up terrible.
I'm talking about the one.
Would it be better if I, should I call in on my phone?
Yes.
Dad, or turn off your camera and let's see if that works, one or the other.
Yeah, let me try to turn off the camera first. Okay. All right. Hold on.
Okay, go ahead.
See if it's any better. Is that any better?
That's better.
Okay. Can you, can you hear me now? Okay.
We can hear you.
All right. We'll just turn off the camera then.
Yeah, that's better. So far it is better.
I was talking about the lighting under the bridge that Zach got estimates for.
Right. Why don't we put it on the wish list? Because we got to do it sometime.
Okay. That's not contingent upon the.
No.
Okay.
No, it is not. No, it is not.
I think the only thing that would cost us while they're doing the project is if we asked RG&E to install two new lights above the deck, which I'm not sure where we left off with that. Currently there's one on either side in either direction. And they said that DOT said that they would be willing to do the work as long as we paid for the equipment and the work to be done. So we'd have to cover the costs for the installation of it.
Right. Do you know how much that would cost Zach?
A couple of overhead Cobra lights and for them to wire it up, I'm maybe $2,500. I'm not sure what their, their rates are, but the lights are fairly cheap.
That's not too bad.
Okay.
They'll just install the ugly lights that are kind of up there right now, right? The standard?
Yep. Standard highway lights.
Yeah. No offense to people who think those lights are pretty. I didn't mean to call them ugly.
All right. We talked about the south reconstruction and that is still a further discussion between Bob, Frank and Zach. So we'll come back to that issue for right now. Other than that, I don't have anything further unless there was anything that Lily needed to add to her list. That's when she kind of dropped off. She kind of had issues.
No, I'm glad. I'm glad.
You're good? Okay. Then for me for today, I'm good with the information I have. Next time when we get together on the 20th, I'll do a run of numbers. I'll get all the stuff listed out and we'll have to start talking about prioritizing what is feasible, what is not, what could be postponed, or how the board would like to handle that particular item. So that's it for me. Thank you very much for all your input.
And Mary, the, the thing that I always want and is always hard to get during the budgeting process is budget to actuals for as, as much of the year as we can possibly get.
I will have that for you next, next time around. That will be part of the budget package, which will show our information through December, because I'm working on December right now. I tried to get it for tonight, but there's just, there's just not enough time.
Okay.
You're welcome. Anything else from anyone?
I can't think of anything.
Okay. Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you, Mary.
Jeff Turner.
Hey, Bob. Bob, you're really breaking up again. Why don't you call in on the phone and Jeff is already here?
Yeah. All right, I will.
We'll give you a minute. We'll give you a minute to call in.
Will, will you guys need me for anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Hi, Zach.
Hi, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Go to lock 32 and buy a Crowler.
It will do.
I wasn't joking. I don't know what, I don't know why you're laughing. Let's give Bob a minute.
Actually, for those, I'm just trying to give you guys an update what's going on. The Capitol is really a mess right now. So you might want to tune in after our meeting.
Yeah, the DC National Guard was deployed.
Yep. And apparently there was some explosive devices they disconnected. So it's not looking good over there.
Terrible. Looks like here comes Bob. No, it's Ron Johnson. Dorothea, can you make me a, like a co-presenter or a co-moderator or something? Oh, thank you. There it is. Just want to be able to mute Justin Velestra. I'm just kidding, Justin. No Bob yet. Here comes Bob.
I'm back.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bob.
Yep. This sounds much better than mine too.
Good.
Okay. All right, Jeff, which local law do you want to do first? Jeff?
Whichever one the board wants to do first. I mean, I'm, there are three of them.
Why don't we start with?
One deals with the expansion of the TOD, the other deals with the mineral app parking, and the last one deals with a general reduction in the required parking for restaurants, group hubs, et cetera.
Can, before we, before we get into the minutia, can somebody give an overview on where we are and what are the steps that need to happen and all of that? This, we're talking about the pavilion and the changes that need to happen for the pavilion. We've got a number. I see Jenny Collins is on and Justin Velestra and Casey is on. So really just kind of want to know where we are, what we need to do, what the process is after we do what we need to do, just kind of lay out the whole thing.
Sure. Jeff, do you want to do it or do you want me to do it?
Well, I can give you my, I can give you my perspective.
Why don't you do it? Go ahead.
The one thing the trustees absolutely have to do in order for this pavilion, well, that's not quite true. The problems I understand with the pavilion is parking in, in terms of them needing a variance at this point. So the proposal, as I understand it, is to reduce the parking that would be required for the uses in the area so that, so that there would be enough parking to soak up the difference between what the pavilion is using and what is there. I understand that in terms of, I mean, I may be totally wrong about this, so this is all supposition. I understand that in order, really for this thing to happen financially, one of the stakeholders is lock 32 and their special permit is limited to the edge of their building and would therefore not allow them to serve out there, actually provide service. People could walk up and buy it and take it back, but they couldn't allow service. If the TOD is extended, then they could allow service out there. That would also require an expansion of their special permit. And since they're thereby a pre-existing non-conforming special permit, my suggestion would be as long as they're providing for an expansion, they ought to get the whole use blessed by special permit. So that'd be done. So that the sequence for all of that to happen is sent, sending the public laws, public, or the local laws to public hearing, sending out the seeker notices, sending it to county planning. And the night that we're going to have the public hearing, let me back up. Simultaneously with that, I would think that we would want an amended special permit application from lock 32, which it all could also go to public hearing and be heard the same night that if you adopted the local law expanding the TOD, you could grant that special permit. So on that night, you would do the seeker thing, pass the local law regarding parking and DOT expansion, or I'm sorry, TOD expansion. And then you could grant the new special permit. That's how I understand.
Yep. I think. And questions? Any questions? No. There was also a significant amount of conversation on the comprehensive plan because the current restaurant parking standards we have are standard suburban parking standards. And there was discussion on the comprehensive plan of reducing that to allow less, more flexibility. And, and it's actually a walkable strategy for the village. We want people to walk. We don't want to pave over the entire village with parking lots.
Right. So I'm asking a process question. This goes to county planning after seeker? After the local, so after the local laws?
Not right now, right now, Dan. Once you send, once we set the public hearing date, then Dorothea will be able to send it to county planning.
Okay.
Am I correct, Dorothea?
Yes, it would go to county planning. I would send out all the seeker stuff similar to what we did with the active transportation. So we need at least 30 days. And I, given the timeframe, I'd actually ask for a little more. If I'm, was going to request the board to set the public hearing for February 23rd if they move forward.
That's almost two months. How do we do that quicker?
That's not, that's just a little over 30 days. I need 30 days. I'm not even in this week, so I can't even start the process till next week. And I'm already past our next meeting because I have to have 30 days out.
Okay. Can we do 30 days from next week? Because, because you just proposed, say that again, February?
23rd. It would be February, the earliest we could schedule this, Dan, if the calendar's aligned, would be February 12th. All I'm asking is additional two weeks because that gives us a little bit more timeframe. I mean, you could conduct a special meeting. That's the only other thing I could say. But then I would say, look at February 19th. Then we always have a meeting on my birthday, so that makes sense. So, you know, I need a little bit of time. If you strip me down to 30 days exact, it's really tight trying to get everything done.
Okay. And I hear you on all that, Dorothea, and it's the 6th of January. So to go from the 6th of January to the 23rd of January just seems like too much time. I'm wondering how we can expedite that a little bit.
As I said, the board can set a special meeting. I won't be back into the office until Monday, which is the 11th. So I couldn't even start that clock and getting everything out until the 12th, 13th. So I'm already past your next, your February meeting for 30 days.
Who else is in the office so that, you know, tomorrow being the seventh, we could get a half a week?
Nope. Steve could start the county, but that doesn't start the seeker and I need to handle the seeker documents. So it's going to be next week before any of this can go out.
If I may chime in, none of this needs to be completed before the public hearing. They need to be completed before you vote on the laws. So there is no 30 day restriction for the public hearing. It just needs to be posted on the website. So if you don't know how long it's going to take to get everything out to county planning and handle seeker and all of that, you don't need to before it's going to in the public hearing. That's all I'm going to chime in.
Yeah, but you couldn't, you can't act on the legislation until the 30 days passes.
Correct.
And acting is voting on it.
Correct.
Not the public hearing.
Okay. I think Dan, what Dan is trying to get here is to the end of the game, if you will. And the game can't end until we've got the seeker notices and the county planning stuff done. I mean, am I right, Dan, or am I wrong?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like that.
Like I said, you could set a public special meeting like February 16th, February 15th. You know, I just need a few days into next week so I can get all this out and properly notified.
I'm certainly willing to do a special meeting in this case.
Dorothea, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
What date would lock 32 have to get a special permit application in, in order for that to be part of a public hearing sequentially after we do the local law?
If they can get it to me now, it can be on next meeting next week.
And is that enough to meet?
Yeah.
Or, okay.
That would be fine. That, that one I don't have a problem with. It's meeting 30 days on the other. And just trying to get back on the 11th, reality, I will do my best to get it all out on the 11th. I'm just saying, give me to the 12th, 15th to make sure everything's out and properly done.
Steve, you have a question? Sorry, the mayor can't hear you or see you. Did you have a question, Steve?
Yeah, well, I just want to say, I think, I know Casey and Jennifer are on here. I think the thing that's really important here right now is them knowing that the board is behind the changes to push forward because that was Casey's reservation on this is knowing that the law is going to change, that he will actually have the loot, the, the use. There are a few other little hurdles we have to jump over as far as getting the pavilion approved. I think the biggest thing today is knowing that the ball has been pushed forward and that you're going towards, you know, that the village is going towards approving this and getting it worked out. I think that would relieve them. So I think they're a little, they're a little nervous on everything. Because there's a big financial investment involved. So I think timeframe wise, if everything works right now, I think they'd be okay. And if, and if, if everything falls in line, the pavilion could be started in the beginning of March. And they, and hope to be done at the end for use.
Maybe recognized. I'm sorry, Bob cannot hear me. This is trustee Len here. Am I, can I be heard?
Yep.
Am I heard? Thank you so much. Yes, Steve, I appreciate what you're saying. But I would like to point out that the trustees are not in a position to give approvals at this time. We have not yet had a public hearing. And in the interest of our process, which is to include the public and their input, I think it would be very hesitant to do what you're suggesting, which is to make promises. We do have our process and other than beyond the way we are conducting ourselves, which is the way it has been laid out. And I think that is exactly the process we should follow. I'm sure everyone understands that. I understand the extra layer of, of strain that the owner is under presently. However, we do need to involve the public. And so I do have to say that as well, as far as a special meeting is concerned. I would like to be very aware, very cognizant of alerting the public to the fact that we have a public meeting and if it's special, that we are aware of the time of day that we are holding the meeting. So nothing appears as if we're trying to do something out of the public eye. And that is my comment on that. So I take a little bit of issue with what you're saying, Steve, as far as giving approval ahead of time. We just, we just cannot do that. That is my opinion. It is not a legal step for us to do that.
Yeah. Lily, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you give any approvals today. Alls I'm saying is, is right now to get the timeline going, to, to work on whatever. Get the timeline going to, to let them a little, have a little relief and knowing that the actual cart is moving. Up until this point, it's all been nothing but, you know, there is no action. And if, if the local law and the, the public hearing is, is proposed today and the, and the thing moves over, I think it will give them a little comfort. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying you can promise them anything today. Alls I'm saying is, is to push the process and get the process started, you know, officially started.
Well, clearly we are doing that. Clearly we are doing that.
Yeah, I agree. That's what we're doing here. So can, can we go back, Dorothea, to, all right, so you said, all right, you're back on the 11th and you need a day or two.
Yep.
So.
What I'm saying.
Hold on, please let me finish. And then it's the, then it's a 30 day visit. And to Lily's point, Lily, I'm in agreement with you that let's schedule this thing for a time that, you know, people can attend. So we scheduled the public here, we actually formally scheduled the public hearing at, or do we open the public hearing at our next trustees meeting, which is next Tuesday?
No, you can't open it until that 30 days.
Until that 30 days. Okay. So Dorothea, next week is the 11th. You know, let's say you got it done by the 13th. And I'll want to know at some point what support you need to be able to get that done.
I don't, okay.
And, and so then let's just pick a date.
Okay. Looking at the calendar to give you the best date, which not falling on weekends, I can't control that. And the 15th, I would have said, but there's already a PZDA meeting. So we don't, we can't do two meetings at one time. That's too confusing for the public. I would suggest February 16th. If the board wanted to schedule a special meeting for February 16th, that would be the day to get it done. If you're trying to move it as quickly as possible, given me proper time. If I was going to, you know, if I said I got it out by the 12th or the 13th, you're looking at a Saturday and I wouldn't do a public hearing on a Saturday. So just other delays, the earliest then would be the 16th.
16th works for me. How about the rest of the trustees?
Works for me. Where is Bob? Bob, would you run the meeting, please?
Works for me. It works for me. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can now.
All right. So let's pencil that in. Do we need to formally propose that?
Well, what you would do is you would set the public hearing for each of the local legislations you're looking at, like you normally do. And that starts the work I need to do.
So we're proposing that all three would be done the same evening?
Yeah.
Same meeting. Okay.
You know, they all have, all have to be done the same evening.
Okay. Just didn't know if, okay.
You can, you can separate them, but if you're going to do them, you can do them all at the same time too.
So we're talking about a special meeting on February 16th at, at what time?
I would say 7:00 PM.
Yeah, like we normally do.
Yep.
What time, Dorothea?
7 o'clock.
Seven? Okay.
All right. I will make that motion.
All right. I will second it.
Hold on, hold on. Dorothea, don't you think it ought to be three motions?
Three motions.
Three separate motions. Okay. Thank you.
So which do you want to do? The current zoning map first?
The correction of the zoning map first.
Seconded by Bob. Correct?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. And ready for roll call? Trustee Keating?
Can I say something about the zoning map? Please, before we vote, and it's not going to hold anything up. But it was very difficult to figure out what it was we were doing with the lack of specificity on this map. Shane Place isn't even identified. And the area that we're talking about, one could not identify those buildings or building that is included in the extension of this overlay. My whole point is, is there a way, without holding up any process, and I think we can do that, to have a map made with more specifics than what we have here? I think this would be very confusing to any member of the public who is going to look at this. That's a question. That's a question.
We can have Michelle W. at the town GIS do, do a more detailed map.
I think we should have that.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that happen, Frank.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
So does that need to be done before Dorothea can submit everything for this?
No. No, as I said, no, as I said.
The map, I'm sorry.
No, as I was saying, as I said, I don't think doing a better map with more specificity is, is going to hold anything up. Am I right, Jeff? We're just adding a little more clarification.
The, the map that we have shows an extension of the TOD. It appears to end at the edge of the Aladdin's building. So with that, that would fulfill the notice of what you're doing. And I think you can go to public hearing on that basis. But we ought to get up, if there's going to be a more detailed map, it ought to be done ASAP and gotten up on the, the website.
Okay, I'll call Michelle W. tomorrow.
Okay, because as Lily mentioned, our whole comprehensive plan committee is going to be interested in this. Like we need to, to provide as much detail as possible.
Yes.
Good point.
Okay, back to roll call. All right, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfier?
Lanfier, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
That motion passes. Okay.
Okay, next one?
Is the amendment of section 210 dash 25.2C, the zoning code of Village Pittsburgh. So this is parking space requirements?
I'll make a motion to pass the next local law. Do I have a second?
Look, can I, can I, can I mention something? This is Turner. There is a footnote to this section which does an alternative measurement. And I don't, I'm not sure quite what to do with that. It, it asks for the maximum of.
Do you mean the size of each, of each space? Jeff?
No, it's an alternative measure in terms of the number of spaces.
Okay.
And that is the number of spaces at four to one, or nice before the bar.
Can't hear you.
All right, so.
Stay still.
Okay, so there's an alternative measure. It's the greater of uh, one space for, per four people. Or a, the, the one person for linear foot of bar plus 13, one for 13 square feet adjacent to the bar. And I guess I'd ask Steve, I don't know what, how that worked, how that would work in account.
I, I'm not sure, Jeff. It's kind of confusing to me. I don't, I don't understand it, to be honest with you.
Well, it's, it's designed to measure the parking spaces by the perspective usage driven by the bar and the area adjacent there, too.
And that would only affect the tavern, though it wouldn't affect like Aladdin's or simply Crepes.
Right, right.
Right?
No, all of them.
Well, yeah, I mean, if they have a bar, it's going to be all of them.
Right, if they have a bar. The, the thing is right now, just so everybody understands, right now technically that whole area is 15 spaces shy of what is required for the use right now. Just so everybody understands, so a variance for parking down there would be rather large. Um, what this, this changing of this law, one to three to one to four, would make it so that there's eight extra spaces there, which allow, would allow the building of the pavilion without a variance. That's, that's the whole point is we're, we're already way shy in the parking down there as it sits today without doing anything else. So I didn't know if everybody was aware of that fact.
Steve, I, I'm off a little on your math. You said 15 required spaces and we're picking up eight with this code change.
Correct.
So doesn't that mean that there's seven more you got to find somewhere?
No, no, right now, where, where it sits today, where, right now, today, you are 15 spaces shy of what is there. You don't have enough spaces for the use that's already there. So trying to add something, you're going to make that way worse. You would need, you would be 23 spaces shy.
Oh, okay.
You, you're saying you're going to be more shy by adding something else? And that's the whole point of this. So I guess I'm not understanding the, the linear footage. You'd have to go through and measure the bar space on each of those places to find out which of the two options work.
Well, presumably that's part of the calculation of how many spaces you need right now.
Yeah, based, I base the, the calculation, what you need right now, based on seats. Purely on tables and seats.
Well, I'm only, I'm only telling you what's in the code.
Right.
Tables and seats of the entire establishment, so the indoor plus the pavilion, or tables and seats of only the pavilion?
No, everything down there, of simply Crepes, Aladdin's, Act 32, the Coal Tower, uh, the, the businesses that are there, um, the new commissary, every, I took everything. The retail is square footage wise and employees, the restaurants and taverns are based on seating and tables.
Hey, can I ask a, um, a procedural question?
Sure.
And I know the answer to this, but I, I, I just kind of wanted on the record. Lock 30, so to Lily's point, which I understand completely, we, we can't give an opinion on, on what, how we're going to rule on this until we actually rule on it. In doing this, lock 32 will apply for a new special permit. Should it be, uh, should the new special permit not be allowed, their existing special permit will still be in effect, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's no way they can lose.
Correct.
Their, okay, I just, I knew the answer to that. I just wanted it said.
Okay. Any other questions?
Hey, Jeff, just, just to be clear, is it, in, in the way you're reading that rule, is that an either or?
No, it's a max, it's the greater of.
Um, my, my internet cut out for a little bit, so I apologize. Did, did, was there any mention of this? We talked about it during the zoning code update, but, um, eliminating parking minimums.
Yeah, um, I think that's a good idea. I think that's a very good idea.
Yeah. I agree.
I think we might want to consider parking maximums, actually.
Go further on that, Bob. What do you mean?
Well, in, in urban centers, uh, communities are doing that, so you don't get too much parking. You limit the amount of parking. So if somebody has a restaurant, they can only build the amount of a parking that the code requires. You can't build 200 spaces or 300 spaces, um, and just create a lot of asphalt. It, it's done to make communities more walkable and to, um, reduce the amount of impervious surface.
So there was hesitation during our zoning code update when we talked about doing that because many people still felt we're on this, the tipping point of, of being ready for eliminating the parking minimums. I, I'm still in favor of just eliminating that. Now that may change, uh, what we do going forward, but I, I I want to have that on the table because it would help some of these issues and in many places. And we're already seeing that we're using parking, um, for outdoor space and people are liking it. At like, you know, Rachel's is a great example. It's like, that is a waste of plate, a, a great place for outdoor seating and we are requiring parking there because we want people to, to drive in and, and not walk around.
It wasted real estate as parking. And in the village, you would have better uses than parking lots, which are, are ugly. Does the city of Rochester have a, a maximum, Renee?
Um, I believe they eliminated it with their, um, I'm not, I'm not sure on that with their lead is com- it was included in their comprehensive plan, but I'll double check on that. I know they're discussing it and I don't know if it's in certain areas or entirely. So I'll, I'll look into that. We talked about that and I forgot to check on that. So my apologies.
Nope, that's fine. All right, any other questions on this?
Yeah, I, I have one question on it. Um, we've done this before, so there, there is precedent on this before. And, and Lily, I, I, again, I really do hear you when you say we, we can't give our opinion until we have everything in front of us, but we've done this before where we've done kind of a straw poll, where we basically say, in theory, does this sound like something that is okay, or is, or does this sound like something that we're going into it thinking no?
Dan, I think what you can do is you can voice any concerns you have now. And so the applicant knows, you know, if there are things that need to be, um, addressed. Um, I, I don't think we have, I haven't put any concerns on any of the three proposals we're making tonight. So I, I think our commitment to take it to public hearing is a sign that, um, in the discussion itself is that there is full support for this.
Okay, uh, may I ask, um, point blank of all of the trustees, do they agree with what Bob just said? I say yes to what Bob just said. Lily, you're on mute.
This is trustee Lanfier. I agree that, uh, in, by, by virtue of the fact that we are considering changing our code, but I, I'd like to be, this is just my own personal opinion, to make, uh, it make it more clear that we're not doing this at the behest of an applicant. Because that's not how our code changes occur. Us, our code changes occur when the trustee is determined that there is benefit to the village, that it's not in, in there's, things are occurring that are not in the best interest of the village of Pittsburgh. And so that is how we are, we do not have an application in front of us. What we are doing is proposing code changes to better serve the people of the village of Pittsburgh. And so that is my, that is what I am, that is what is driving me to consider these changes because it is in the best interest of the village. So, um, that's it. It's not, it's not specifically driven by an applicant. I think that is the wrong driving factor. That's my opinion. The opinion, my opinion is that is for the benefit of the village of Pittsburgh.
You are correct, Lily, and it also actually implements recommendations from the comprehensive plan. Uh, this topic, this very topic was discussed and the thought was that we should adjust our parking standards um, to something that's a more walkable standard because we really aspire to be a fully walkable village.
Yes, I think we got, we, it's a slippery slope if we begin a process of, by saying, well, we're doing it at the behest of a specific business or applicant, because that sets a precedent. And I don't think that we would want to be in a position where, uh, another business owner has a, a specific agenda and then we need, need to react to that specific agenda. I think that, um, we have been discussing this, as Bob said, because it was part of the comprehensive plan recommendations.
Yeah, I hear you and we wouldn't be discussing this if it weren't for, uh, you know, a, a business who wants to make a change. So.
Okay, that, that, I, I stated my opinion, so, okay.
Wait, that's, the opportunities arise when things like this come up and then we discuss and we, we look at the comprehensive plan and say, this is an opportunity to, to align our zoning code with what was said by our community. And like, we have that in the comprehensive plan. There's no, that's setting a bad precedent because we have, I mean, we stated this already in our vision. So I understand what Lily's, Lily's, is saying, um.
That's what's driving us. You're, you're correct in what you just said. I, I believe that is what, that is what we're reacting to and that's what, what is driving us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Lily, you are correct. We have the situation with this that it's a win-win because the, the property owner wants to do it and it also conforms to our comprehensive plan. But you are correct, our zoning generally implements what was determined in our comprehensive plan.
In this case, it didn't though, because we, I mean, clearly we did not change much about our parking. We tried, we tried to reduce it a little, but we, we weren't very aggressive about it. So I think we've got, uh, I think in this case, that the comprehensive plan is, was more ambitious with its, its goals than our zoning code was.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
So Frank, uh, an opportunity for you to speak as well. Do you, do you agree with the general approach?
What I agree with is the fact that the board is going forward with a concept that is going to benefit the residents, our, our, our constituents. And barring any unforeseen problem, it appears like we are going forward with a very positive concept. Anything beyond that would smack of a tacit approval, which we don't want to give. So I believe we're showing as much support as we can for this concept, as, as I said, as, as we possibly can.
Thank you. And so nobody has, I didn't hear any concerns in there about any of the specifics. I know we're going to get more into this as we go through the process and have something to react to in a formal application and those kinds of things. But initially, there are no reservations that you guys have that you have not surfaced.
No, I don't have any other reservations.
Okay.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
To adjourn?
Don't we have one more local law to approve, I thought?
You guys still have.
Two more to.
Two, two, two. We're still need the motion on the table of minimum parking spaces.
Um, I will make a motion to, uh, move the, uh, proposed law to here. What do we, what am I supposed to say?
Public hearing.
To public hearing, um, the proposed law on eliminating the minimum parking. To.
I second.
Uh, wait.
Should I do that again?
Hold on. Are we eliminating it or are we going with?
Yeah, that's not, that's not what we're saying.
We're not, that's what I wanted to discuss. So that's not what is on the table. So how do we?
No.
So, uh, can I amend my, um, motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'm just going to start over. Um, I make a motion to move the, um, crap, what are we calling it? If I can't.
Proposed local law change.
Proposed local law change to parking?
On the, on section 210, 25 dash 2C.
Okay. I moved, I propose that we move that to public hearing.
And I second Renew's motion.
I clearly never make motions. I need to work on this.
You can just read the title of the local law.
I'm going to.
All right, roll call please.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfier?
Lanfier, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
So I have one question, going back to the first, um, local law on the, the zoning map change. Um, when we, so we're going to have a more detailed description or map, uh, available. And if through the public input process or through our discussion, we make changes to that map, um, that evening at the hearing. that evening at the hearing, do we, does that delay the process at all?
It can only be less restrictive.
Less restrictive. And if we go more restrictive, okay, this is just like the active transportation plan then. If it's, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, next, next. Jeff?
It's the local law for the Monroe Ave parking change.
Um, right now we have parking that's permitted on the the south side of Monroe Avenue, west of the four corners. It's never used. There's, I think it's a thirty minute restriction. I think if we made the parking, this was a recommendation that was made many years ago, but we never did it. But if we unrestrict that parking, I think people will actually, actually use it over the Christmas season. I talked to the people that worked at Chandeliers. They have a need for more employee parking where they do deliveries. So this was suggested as a solution to solve their parking problem. It's pavement that doesn't do anything right now. It just makes the four corners less safe for pedestrians. It is, I should add that right now, because it is a DOT highway, parking would not be permitted between four o'clock and six o'clock in the evening during rush hour.
And do, do we know how, if the emergency services have been contacted about this one? Just so we.
Well, we're not changing parking space. We're just changing the time restrictions on that, Renee. So we haven't contacted them, but we probably as a courtesy should tell them.
Okay.
Abe, Bob, a point of clarification. The way this is reading, it, it does not, it does not limit the parking by the number of hours as most of our village parking requirements are. So I could park my car there most of the day without a problem. And I don't know if that's advisable. I would think maybe we ought to put a two or a four hour limit on that.
Well, what, what I want to do Frank is, is the parking is not being used right now. Nobody knows it's there. And so, you know, I think we could revisit this if, you know, if we want to limit it to less, less than all day. But what I would really like to do is get the parking. If we don't do something, DOT will eventually take it away and we'll never get it back. So my, my hope is that people will actually park there like they do in front of Thirsty's on State Street and will reclaim this as a parking resource instead of a right-hand turn lane.
Well, I don't think it's a very good idea. I think we ought to put some kind of a, a hour limit on it, but I don't feel that strongly about it. I understand what you're saying, but seems to me that we ought to put some kind of a limitation on it.
Well, if we, if we just put it back, we can see how it gets used and then I am completely open to limiting, limiting it to some, some restriction, but if we just watch it for a while, it, it might give us some guidance on, on what the right limit would be.
Okay. All right.
Okay, great. And this, I should add, this was a recommendation of the active transportation plan.
Yeah, adding parking in general along there. Yep.
Yep. Okay, any, any other discussion?
No, so, so you're proposing that we talk about this, not that we actually vote on the change right now, right?
No, it has to go to public hearing.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought.
We can take it to public hearing, but we won't pass it tonight. No.
Yeah, fair enough.
Any other questions, discussion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to alter the parking restrictions on the south side of Monroe Avenue. Do I have a second?
You're taking your, you're voting to take it to public hearing? Is that correct?
I'm voting to take it to public hearing. Thank you. Yes, that's.
I will second that trustee, trustee Lanfier.
Thank you. Dorothea, would you do a vote?
Sure. Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfier.
Lanfier, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
I just point out that there are no why as and whereas paragraphs in any of these laws. If, if somebody wanted to add some, that's certainly appropriate and acceptable prior to when we adopt them.
I had some suggestions for the parking one that we could use that I sent around.
Okay, Renee, without specifically addressing, removing all parking restrictions though, the whereas that, that I saw.
Yeah, they were general because we didn't know yet, but we can absolutely use them for this. I mean, anytime where it is, you know, everything still applies. So I can just change some of the wording a little bit. I wasn't sure if anyone thought they were too over the top. I can go on about parking, so I.
Yes. And to a point I agree, but rather than take time with it now, I could discuss it at another meeting. Because that's, that's a much larger concept and I wouldn't want anything to disrupt the trajectory that we are on currently.
I agree.
I think, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, Dorothea, would you call a vote?
You already have.
We don't have anything to vote on.
Oh, oh, you did it. Sorry.
We moved that.
All right, so let's see, what time? It's five twenty-three. So Dan Spitzer said he would call and it's, is there anything else we need to discuss between now and then?
May I chime in a moment?
Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, so I wanted to follow up a little bit on this discussion of parking. This has been talked back and forth for quite a while. I know the planning board has shared a few comments with the trustees. We had a lot of discussions about some of these parking issues about, I don't know, whenever it was, a year ago, a year and a half ago or something like that. And this application that's come along to kind of make those prior discussions make sense again and we should revisit some of those. So that's kind of how we got here. But the discussion, like, one of the prior discussions relating to minimum parking is that does it make, I think there was some discussion just now of eliminating minimum parking completely. Does it make sense to eliminate it in the Shane Place area, much like it does, we've done in the downtown district? Or just the area at least between the canal and Shane Place, which we all agree we can't build any parking lots there? Or we don't want to build any new parking lots there and pretty much none of those businesses can comply with parking regulations there. So we have parking on the books that really doesn't work for that region very well. And then I, I know I have heard comments from the trustees, maybe within the last couple of months, maybe this echoes something from previously where there's a lot of competition for parking there. You have different businesses that want to use it. You have the public that wants to use it to park there and use the canal. And there's conflicts between the businesses. So there's Coal Tower, there's Lot Thirty-two, there's Aladdin's, all those restaurants, they all would love more parking. There's only so much there. Resolving the conflicts between these businesses, I, if that's part of the goal with the minimum parking requirements. I don't know, my, my philosophy is just to kind of let the free market work that stuff out. Yeah, you know, instead of having a lot of regulations on parking, businesses can apply to put stuff in there, but it's not our job to solve those problems. And if you have a business people want to visit, we know people will find a way to get there. They'll park nearby. There's a lot of parking in this village in general and they'll walk a little ways. So and if you're, happen to sell large items that require you to stick in your trunk, like televisions and stuff like that, you have no parking spaces available, then granted you'll have a challenge. But most of our businesses have a lot of walk-up customers, particularly in the Shane Place area. That is a very large amount of their business comes from. People just walk along the canal and so on. So I didn't know if there's still, if you want to completely rule out the eliminating parking in that particular area. I know talking about it village-wide is a much more complicated issue. I'm just bringing it up now and that's a possible way to do it. If, if that's just too complicated to do now, I agree that's one law that's proposed. It sounds like that will resolve the concern at hand.
Justin, I'd like to address that if I could. The, the reason we didn't go to no parking requirements on Shane Place, it's a little different than South Main Street. South Main Street benefits because there's two municipal lots for overflow. There's also side streets on both sides of South Main Street that provide additional parking. Because Shane Place is sandwiched between the canal and the Powers Farm, there really isn't that opportunity for extra parking there. So we didn't, we didn't feel it was appropriate to go all the way to that step because we might, we just have a shortage of parking. And over the years, people do complain some, often not reasonably, when there isn't enough parking. I mean, it, it has been a perennial complaint on Shane Place is the amount of parking down there.
Um, but I think the problem here is all this solves is telling businesses they can't go in. Is that what we want? And so we know we can't create more parking. So the only thing we're accomplishing by setting minimum parking is telling businesses they can't even form a business there. And there's the other thought I know, I've heard comments, I think Lily commented on this recently, that parking also effectively limits the scale of development. If someone wants to tack on three extra stories onto one of these one-story buildings, is that something we necessarily want? And again, I would say the parking regulations are probably not the best way to regulate that. And also minimum parking doesn't take into account that businesses have different hours in which they're busy. So offices and restaurants have completely different hours. And it doesn't make sense to effectively sum them up when they could be using the same shared parking spots. So I don't know what we're trying to solve with minimum parking there, because I don't think it's solving anything. I think all it does is prevent things. And I think there's better ways to regulate building size if that's effectively what you want to do, which is to regulate the, the building size instead of regulating building size via parking.
Well, it's tricky, Justin, though, because some, you know, retail businesses like shops, boutiques, don't take a lot of parking. But if, if say in, you know, Ted Collins Properties, for example, if you had all restaurants or all taverns, you know, you really would have a crunch on parking. So you, you've got to sort of manage it to some degree. Otherwise, you know, there's a limit. The village is only so big, obviously. And so, yeah, I think we were too suburban before. I think we're moving in the right direction. But, you know, I, and maybe I'm, I'm just cautious. Maybe eventually we'll get to that where we'll eliminate if we're a fully walkable village. But I think this is a good first step of going in a direction that's, that's in a more walkable direction without droning in parking. Nobody wants big parking lots here. And if this works, you know, maybe we'll take a look at something else, but let's see how it works out.
You know, I'm ready for that, Justin. I'm ready to eliminate parking minimums on Shane Place. I respect that others want to move slower. That's okay.
Renee, I am, or excuse me, Renee, I am too.
Another R word.
But, but as mayors, as the mayor, I, I get so many complaints about parking. Often they're not reasonable. But there is a learning curve for the public. So hopefully we can bring them.
Baby steps.
Okay. All right, anything else? Any other discussion on this? It is five thirty-one, so we still have a half an hour for Dan. Probably if we call him, he'll, he'll be ready. Is there anything else anyone wants to discuss before we go into attorney-client session?
Did we, before we let Justin go, Justin, were there any other concerns that you had with this process and, you know, based on the last couple of meetings that you all had? Do you have any other issues that we need to resolve?
I think, well, just to update the board, if, and I guess we have Casey online as well, if he, he wants to hear where the planning board is with, with this. Is we've been waiting for the code issues to be resolved, to be identified and resolved. I think we're at that point now. So Steve has been working on the applicant to resolve some landscaping issues and drainage issues and some code issues. And we just received new drawings a couple of weeks ago that address that. The code changes proposed by the trustees resolve two other issues. So at this point, I'm not aware of any code issues that that don't have a proposed solution. Now, the planning board cannot vote on the site plans until code issues are resolved by whatever means are being resolved. If they're being resolved by variance, that needs to be resolved it. If it's a code change, that resolves it. If it's a change in the plans, that needs to be presented to us. So the way I see this going forward is whenever the trustees adopt these laws that fix outstanding issues, the planning board will likely schedule a public meeting if members are willing to go ahead and vote on the plans before us at that time. And then at the H P B would have to vote on them after, as well. They would typically vote after we do. So that's how I expect this to play out.
Justin, this is Lily. I'm sorry to interrupt you. You took a breath and I jumped in. I'm sorry. Is that okay? I need a clarification.
If you have a comment, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. That clarification is, I've been somewhat confused. At this time, the Planning and Zoning Board does not have an application before them. Is that correct or not correct?
Not correct. The applicant submitted an application, I believe, in November. And then the next step is the building inspector, Steve, goes through and reviews it. He reviews it for code compliance. And he did that and they identified a few things he was asking them to change. So drainage, so the stormwater coming off the roof of the pavilion. He's worked with the applicant, so that's turned into a green drainage system, I believe. So Steve did a nice job with that. So the water from the roof goes to water the plants. The other thing is the parking lot needed screening and I think they had a couple of proposals. One had plantings between the parking lot and the canal and, and the November application did not. He's worked with the Canal Corporation and applicant so that they could shift the building slightly to make room for landscaping. And so the drawings we just got a couple of weeks ago included the landscaping. So, so that resolved that issue. So basically what's been happening over the last however many weeks it's been, is the building inspector's been working with the applicant on the application to find code issues and fix them. So we now, so the application, I think the, the best way to say it is not that it didn't exist, but it was incomplete pending the work Steve has been doing with the applicant.
Okay, that is, that, that is the point that I'm trying to make, Justin. And that, that point is that the application does not come before the Planning and Zoning Board until it is deemed ready to review. And I don't know that in this case that that has, that this question I'm asking, did that occur and so that the planning board has before them, which makes the clock ticking, so to speak, a complete application in as far as the review process is concerned, or is that did not happen? So they, in other words, the process begins once the Planning and Zoning Board has before them an, an application which is ready to review. And I'm asking you, is that what has occurred or are you still in the information only stage of your process?
We don't, the public hearing, I was expecting to have public hearings at our regular January meeting. I've also talked with the other board members about scheduling a meeting for this coming Monday to have a workshop to go through some of these things. And what we're going to be compiling is a list of any minor changes we would like the applicants to make. So we haven't, so that process is going to begin very soon. In terms of saying it's absolutely complete, the board hasn't voted on the application being complete.
Okay, I thought that that came from the building department, that they would, they deemed the application as ready to review. And then to, it, it, the point of it was to avoid any of these misunderstandings or glitches in the process where the applicant is under the impression that they're being reviewed and that there, that there's a problem with the timeline because it's taking so long. And the, the point is if your application is not complete and ready for the board to review, so that they have all the information in front of them that they need to make, to take it to public hearing and to make a decision, that it is really a false sense of, of, uh, of completeness that they are being heard in a, in a, in a meeting when actually it's just informal, if you will. And that's differentiation that I think, um, that we tried to make clear when we were working, reworking the code on our process to make that process crystal clear to avoid any, um, concerns that, uh, that everything was taking too long. And I want to make certain that that, that we've cleared that up. So here's an example of exactly what we were talking about. Uh, Jeff, I'm going to ask you about this. Am I stating this correctly that the, what we discussed previously regarding our process was that no application came before a board for review until it was deemed as ready to review. We were avoiding the word "complete" because that, that brings other agencies into it. But it's complete with a small c, but it came for the, in, in the instance of the purpose of review by a board so that they can make a decision. They need all the information. So that being said, is the Planning and Zoning Board able to make a decision prior to the process of the law and zoning changes? That has to be complete first. Is that correct? Before they can make any decisions on the application?
Yeah, I thought that's what Justin just said.
He, that they had a complete application?
No, that.
I heard that they did not have a complete application.
No, no, I thought he said that they would not be acting on the application until the zoning is complete.
Okay, okay. But the site plan, I'm saying the complete site plan. They have that or not?
I don't know.
No. Okay. So at this time, they do not have a complete site plan?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Steve could tell you.
Okay.
We're, we're very closely, we've been taking, you know, being very careful with this to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So no, it hasn't, we are not at a complete final planning board can review it yet because there were issues to be worked out. So I think we're, we're getting very close. And I, like I said before, if the timeline starts now and, and everything falls into place, I think we're in a, in a decent place for all this to fall in line in the March timeframe. So that, that's what, that's what the wish is, and we're real close to a final site plan right now. That's why it's informal, uh, to Justin, our planning board. I want to make sure that any concerns are dealt with before a final, you know, I mean, we present it and say, vote.
Okay, so that, so the applicant understands that the, the formal review process has really not yet begun?
Correct.
Yes, there's been no deliberation thus far by the, the planning board on the application. It's been Steve identifying issues and resolving them first. We've had, um, so we, the board hasn't had a, um, gotten into the technical things. We haven't looked at the landscaping, the lighting and stuff like that yet. So the big, the problems that have been addressed right now are the code violations. We can't, we're not, the planning board can't do anything with an application that has code violations. They need to be resolved, well, we can deny it, but we can't approve it until the code issues have been addressed. So, uh, so that's, we've been waiting for a solution to that. I've been talking, as I said, I was talking to the other members of the board. The next thing we're going to do is now that we have proposals to solve all of the zoning code issues, um, I would like to start talking with the other board members on lighting and landscaping and stuff like that to see what their thoughts are and start compiling a list of changes of that we think might make sense and get that list to the applicant. And I believe the applicant is also seeking the same process from the H P B where they want to know if the architecture is okay. So the big picture here is we want to get a list of, and I'm going to call them minor changes right now. Um, I don't know if they're major or minor, but changing a plant or changing a light fixture or changing the size of a, uh, of a beam, whatever it is. Um, it makes sense to compile that list, have the applicant get a complete list, they can make all the changes at once. And then once the code adoption is done, we get updated drawings that the boards would be in a position to act on them.
Okay.
So that's how I've been seeing this going.
Yeah, and just, just so you know too, that next week they are going back in front of the H P B with the drawing, the current drawing. It's still informal to them too, to make, because, um, understandably, uh, Mrs. Collins doesn't want to invest too much more money in the drawings until she's, you know, the board has given their opinions and maybe tweak the design a little bit. Um, we're hoping to get everything, like I said, finalized, you know, get an informal next week. And then the meeting in February through the H P B would be, you know, then it could be reviewed. And if, if it has to delay till March, the first week of March for the H P B, I think we'd all be fine with that as long as we get all the little idiosyncrasies worked out.
Um, we had one more item is the, I talked about the planning board and site plans. I had not talked about the zoning board and variances. So I do not, uh, so we, I believe we have an application for a variance uh, for the parking lot because, to put it in the front yard. Uh, so the code prohibits parking lots in the front yards. And the zoning change uh, is independent of that. And in this particular area between the road and the canal, there basically isn't no legal spots to put parking lots. Uh, the backyard is the canal, so you can't put parking lots in the backyards. The side yards are basically used by buildings unless, uh, there happens to be a vacant area like there is in this little, um, where the pavilion is going. But pavilion seems to be a better public use than a parking lot. Um, and, uh, the, the only other way to make parking is to demolish buildings, which we clearly don't want to do. We like our historic buildings. So if, if anyone has any input about this, I, I understand the vision of not having parking lots in the front yards. We want to have landscaping and sidewalks and have people walking along and have things attractive. Uh, but it doesn't work in this particular section of the, the district between the, the road and the canal. It doesn't seem there's any other choice other than to say no parking lots. So.
I think the other factor, Justin, is that it's, there's parking there now. It's, it's configured differently, but it's already, we're not putting new parking in the front yard. We're simply reconfiguring parking that already exists there.
Uh, well, well, that's correct, but, uh, is that there is parking there now or making the parking lot smaller. Uh, so I, I mean, that'll go through, we'll go through that with a variance application, but we may act on that variance application prior, that particular one for allowing parking in the front yard prior to the trustees adopting zoning change. I, I haven't, I don't know how that's going to go yet. I think the variances are independent of that. Um, if anyone has a, a thought about that or comment on that, by all means, speak up. So it, I'm not sure if we'll act on the variance application, depending on what the board wants to do or if the board wants to wait for the trustees to adopt their zoning code changes, then we could act on all, everything at once. Um, I just wanted to throw that out there that we, that we may act on the variance application sooner.
Okay, and Justin, um, go ahead.
I have much to add on that. Any, any other comments on that, on, on the variance issue?
Yeah, well, not specifically on the, but it's sort of related to the variance issue. Justin, I want to go back to something that you said earlier, which is that, um, you know, your board will formally review this after we've actually made, you know, assuming i- if we make the actual changes to the code. Um, how are you? Right after we?
We'll discuss it. I expect we'll discuss it before you go down.
Okay, yeah, that's a very, very well set. Thank you. You said it better than I did. Um, but I think you can see where I'm going with this. How is it possible to schedule that ahead of time so that it can be done in an expedient manner? Once we're done with what?
We, we should.
What I'm getting at is I would hate to see us on the sixteenth, you know, pass this and then you schedule things and we have to wait for a while and I call back. And, and if we don't pass it, then you cancel it.
Dan, I, I would hesitate to recommend anything in terms of procedure for the planning board because they are an independent-appointed board. And, and as trustees, uh, we really shouldn't be interfering in their, in whatever their procedures are. Whether we like them or not, we really, really, it's kind of off limits.
That wasn't a recommendation, it was a question. Is that possible, Justin?
Uh, well, my expectation of what, instead of debating this, I'll just let you know what my thoughts are is that, um, we are often willing to have special meetings. We already talked about this at our last meeting that we knew this process would take a little bit of time. We weren't sure if that, when it was completed, would align with uh, when our normal meeting schedule is. So we talked about this at our last meeting. Everyone said they're willing to have a special meeting if necessary to resolve this after the trustees do. Um, and we often do that. It's on a case-by-case basis. But I would expect now that we know the date that the trustees are planning to have the public hearing. Unfortunately, I don't know if that's the date they plan to vote, but that's the date you plan to have the public hearing. Depending on what you hear, you may want to make a minor change. But, um, I will talk to the rest of the planning board members and uh, see if we can schedule a meeting shortly after that trustees' meeting uh, where we can, uh, review how it's ended up. So if the trustees voted on it, we, we can move along on, on our end as well. So everyone was wanting to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Justin.
Um, is there any other questions on where we're at with this process?
Um, is there anything else you want to tell us?
I'm just wondering if you had any other questions. So, um, I think there's proposed resolutions to all the known code issues now, which is great. Uh, there's a variance, there's two code changes. And, uh, Steve has worked with the applicant to remedy all the issues he's identified. So at least I think we have a plan right now in front of us that, uh, we can start having, um, further discussions about, which is great.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Justin.
Does lock thirty-two or Ms. Collins want to have any questions or comments?
Okay, let's, um, let's move on. I would make a motion to enter attorney-client session. Yeah?
I believe Ms., I think Ms. Collins wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, I, I was, I was slow clicking. Um, I, I think my questions have been answered as the last few statements wrapped up. It gave me a much clearer, um, picture of the order of, um, activities. So I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Justin.
Hey Bob, this is Casey from lock thirty-two. I had a quick question, um, for Steve. So if I believe I understood this properly, we need to amend our special use permit um, and get an application in. We did do that in the fall when this whole thing first started for the patio. Steve, will that application work or should I go through and fill out a new application and, and submit it?
Of course, now I was muted. I, uh, I have to look, Casey. If not, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow and we'll straighten it out whether you need to put in a new one or whether the existing one will, uh, suffice.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
I'm wondering if Jeff could answer that question because I believe, this is trustee Len here, that that was for a temporary use permit. And because I, I inquired about that, whether that would still suffice. And, uh, I believe the recommendation was that it would, you probably would want to move forward with a more permanent uh, change to your special use permit rather than the temporary use, which would be by its very nature temporary. So, um, I think it would be up to you what, for what you applied. But I believe the, the idea was that you would want a more permanent um, solution.
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to look at it tomorrow, Lily, to see which way it was presented. I wasn't quite sure whether we did it on a temporary basis or.
As my memory, that it was for the temporary because of COVID and that we extended it into April, I think.
Correct. And I, I do think if that's the way it is, that they need to reapply for a permanent solution to be able to use the complete tavern overlay that's, that's being proposed.
Correct. And, and I, and a question is part of this also would be a discussion regarding the public use portion of, of it, as we have discussed in the past, that that was sort of high on the list of priorities, that this, the pavilion area be open to public. And we were assured that it would be open. And we got letters from, from, uh, the owner of Coal Tower and owner of Aladdin's that they found it a very helpful toward their business. And, and that was very positively received by me especially, uh, that, um, everyone had access. And so there's a layer to this that I'd like to be clarified regarding the special use permit and, uh, the ability of other businesses to use the pavilion. And that's, I, I'd sort of like a clarification around that. So, and I know that the patio at one point, uh, in its inception, and I'm sure Jennifer, excuse me for calling you by your first name, what we, we called this, when it was built, the patio was the, um, I don't know what the concept was, for a public gathering space. And so I, I want to make sure that that spirit of that is still being honored because grant money and village money was used to build that patio along with Mr. Collins. And so I think going forward, we wouldn't want to deny the public access to it. And so that's part of the discussion that I would like to have, just.
That is, that's been the intention all along. Um, that is why I'm the applicant as the property owner, not Casey as the owner of lock thirty-two. I believe you also received a letter from Pierre of Simply Crepe. So it's all of the, um, all of the restaurants on the street. Um, and quite frankly, as, as well, our, our retailers are thrilled because it, if, for all the same reason, you know, people are there enjoying the space and they're going to patronize a, a dress shop or, or get a, you know, a coke at Coal Tower. Every, every bit of the use benefits all of them. So that's kind of the stated intent from the beginning.
Yes, thank you very much for clarifying that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think Lily, when, when they, they, they change or apply and do a special use permit, some sort of wording can be, can be put in the findings for that special use permit. Do you know what I mean? To, to not give exclusivity.
Yeah, yes, right. Or even the feeling of it, feeling of exclusivity.
Condition.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Um, if I can add another comment to that, um, one of the issues we had with this is what you're proposing there to have a shared outdoor use facility. The zoning code prohibits that. Um, the zoning code only allows indoor, um, recreational facilities and doesn't allow outdoor recreational facilities in that area. If that's what you want and that, and that's what you want things to be, you may want to consider incorporating that into the use table to allow outdoor recreational facilities. Uh, the definition exists for them, but I don't think they're allowed in any of our zoning districts. And I have no idea why. That might be a mistake. Um, but, uh, that would give more, um, ability to construct things like this if they're actually a permitted use in and of themselves.
Hmm, is it considered outdoor gathering or is opposed to outdoor recreational? That, those two different uses?
I think they're all the same.
Okay.
They, uh, get, uh, I think it's, uh, after, let me go look up the term for it. I can, I can do that, uh, chime in in like thirty.
Okay. Well, maybe it's something we should do on our own time, Justin. What do you think? How about that?
I think we, I think we should move ahead and enter attorney-plant session because Dan.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, well, the term, the, the term that's not allowed is, it says recreation or entertainment facility outdoor. That's a definition that exists, but none of our zoning districts allow it, and I don't know why. I've, I've heard, uh, it sounds like Lily, that it's important to you to, to be able to allow facilities that are for shared public use that are outdoors. So you can add, address this on your own time whenever you want, but adding it to the use tables would make sense.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to enter attorney-client session.
Lan, for your second.
Okay. Dorothy, would you call your team?
This is Turner, I'm, I'm signing off.
Okay, aye.
Okay, trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
He's gone.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure, trustee Stetser?
I think I already voted, but aye.
Okay. Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Okay, I'm going to lock the room.
Wait, Dorothy, Dan is going to come back in. He just needed to talk through his girls real quick.
All right, I'm just going to dismiss the people that, if you're just chiming in for the meeting, we're going to ask you to leave. This is a closed session for the board.
Okay. And Dan is going to.
Yes, Dan is, I just texted him. He just had to take a pause for a second and he wanted me to let, let him know. So he's going to come back in before you lock the room.
Great.
Okay. I'll just hang. Yeah, we have to let Spitzer get in too. They have regained the Capitol Building, by the way. It's now secure.
Well, that is good news.
Yep, and they threw up a six o'clock curfew in D.C. Just as your live news updates.
Having lived at Fifth and Independence for so many years, I, I am so protective of that beautiful architecture. I'm just watching the, the news is terrifying. It's like, oh my goodness. Now it's all, it doesn't, I just, anytime, anyway.
I don't know what damage, it looks like they threw things around and they actually got in offices and everything else.
Yeah.
Wow.
They, they got quite far considering it's the Capitol Building.
Man, those neighborhood, I mean, people live right around there. They must be just terrified.
I would imagine. That's just awful. It really is awful.
I haven't watched any live coverage because we've been on a meeting, but every once in a while I get an alert and I, I've only seen still photos. I almost don't want to see.
Yeah, I've just had it refreshing with CNN to see what was going on. Let's see, up, looks like we have Mr. Malcolm coming in.
Who's Mr. Frank? Who's Mr. Frank?
I have no idea. Can't hear him.
I don't know, but I don't know why he's here.
Is it?
Um, I don't know why it says Frank's name. So he's a client of mine who I did my last.
I know.
I've got, I've got that look like Dan.
I'm definitely not Frank. I've had.
I know, I know that.
You know, just in case there's a riot or something.